Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Winchester Planning Board. Today is Thursday, December 13th. I'm Lance Grinsback. I serve as chairman of the board. With me tonight are my colleagues Drew Botero and Mary McKenna. On my right, on my left Maureen Meister, Betsy Crager, and our town planner, Betsy Ware. In the audience, there's our recording secretary and town engineer, Beth Rudolph. So, tonight's agenda, which members have before them, after the chairman's report and comments, we'll have a brief opportunity for matters from the audience. Then we're going to spend a block of time talking about the Town Center Initiative, starting with an award from the Griffin Foundation. Talk about the recent work of the committee that's been looking at detailed zoning concepts and procedures. And talk, Betsy has some information on the state's new Compact Neighborhoods program. There's an option there to get some funding for the town, so we're going to discuss that. We'll take a little bit of time later in the evening to review the status of subdivisions. There are quite a few in the town, some of them dating back a few years, some of them dating back as incomplete subdivisions, ten or fifteen years. So, we've been making an effort to clean those up, and we'll take a status report on those. And later in the evening, we'll go through a series of very brief project updates on a whole series of projects that are active across the town, and then do a very brief review and closure on the minutes. We're going to try this evening to finish early, perhaps closer to 9:30, so I'll appeal to people to keep their comments brief, and we'll see what happens. So, if there are many matters from the audience, let me just ask, are there any? Nope, seeing none. So, let's take up the Town Center Initiative. Our first order of business tonight is a very pleasant one, is to welcome Helen Babcock, in one of her many guises as a famous citizen of the year.
Disguises.
Disguises, but we certainly welcome you. The, as board members are quite aware, we've spent a couple of years working on the Town Center Initiative to sort of see what we could do to improve the vibrancy of the retail centers and keep the areas. One of the efforts we made was to, and jointly with the Board of Selectmen, was to put together a parking study. It took quite a while, but we're implementing that. Town manager is putting the pieces in place over the winter. And one of the issues that came up during that study was the question of, you know, what are the parking signs going to look like? And Mary McKenna took the initiative to talk with the Griffin Center and to see if we could get a grant, an application in for some, to do work on developing some design guidelines for parking signs and wayfinding signs for the center. So, I'm pleased to welcome, this is Babcock, representing the Arthur Griffin Foundation tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I might start out, I told Paula Tognerelli I would do this, that we are not the Griffin Museum. They need funding. The Griffin Foundation was founded by Arthur Griffin in 2001, and our purpose is to give money out, which is a wonderful thing to be, I love being on this committee, to beautification projects within the town and to young people who are looking to go on scholarships, for young people looking to go on study photography. So, Mary had mentioned it, Mary McKenna had mentioned it, and Lance gave a great presentation to the trustees. And we feel that this is, this really fits with our mission, the signage in the downtown. And the Griffin trustees have presented this check this evening for $10,000 to the, to your cause. And it's the Town Center Wayfinding, Parking Signage Design Guidelines and Standards. It's a long name, but we applaud your efforts, and it makes such sense. And I think Arthur would be really pleased at this initiative. So, hold the check.
We should have done a giant, a giant fake check for the purpose.
Okay, okay.
Well, I guess, maybe take a minute. I think the board and the town will really appreciate this gift, because I, very early on in the parking study, the consultant we had said, not only had he never seen so many signs for parking, different types of signs, different types of parking regulations, I think-
Unbelievable.
He said that he'd never seen so many in a town this size, anywhere in his practice. But, he said, and I put him aside, he once said, "And boy, they're really ugly, too."
And confusing and everything else.
Yeah. So, I think this will go a long way. And I may ask Mary and Helen to describe a little bit about the background and why we're going to be doing this, and what we expect to see out of it.
Well, this all started with the Town Center Initiative and the parking study, and quickly coming to realize, through the consultant, as Lance said, that there was great confusion amongst the town with all the signage. And the signage dates back several decades, and it's still all there. It just collects, it doesn't get changed out. And there isn't really a standard for it. So, a lot of, if you look in some places, you just stand on a corner and count, you can probably count a dozen signs. And one good observation is right there at the rotary, right at that crosswalk where there's the steel metal piece that goes across the planting island. There's probably five or six signs right there. So, it's to get a consultant to come in, do an analysis of what we have, and then come up with a standard for moving forward for our signage and prevent, come up with a logo or wayfinding image for the town that will work with the historic district and the culture of the center. So, that's basically.
And after you presented, I went out and drove around. And once you're aware of it, it's like, wow!
Yeah, within two blocks, you can just, you can find parking regulations that are like this, you know, with each other.
Right, right. So, I can appreciate it. And I think Winchester deserves to have this done. And we are thrilled to be part of it, and to have a chance to let people know what we do. And this is, this is great, so.
Well, I think we're looking forward to getting it done. I think the engineering department, Beth is with us tonight, her assistant town engineer, Matt, has been out working to survey the signs and to look in where they're located. And, help, and I know that Jay Gill, the DPW director, they have a new sign painting machine. And so, they've been slowly upgrading the signs to make changes there. But I'm guessing that all of them will be, you know, quite pleased to sort of see a standardized set of signs brought to the town parking.
I have a vested interest in having this happen, because years ago, I had a business in the downtown. And we tried to get something like this going. And it didn't go very far. It was a bad time, monies were not there. So, it's needed to be done for a long time. So, I'm-
Well, this is timely. You know, thank you for making it happen. Thank you to our foundation members. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Our clerk will come immediately to the bank with it.
One more photo.
There we go. Got the official photo up there.
I left, I left Griffin Foundation, our retiree is leave, so we're going to just have to go with what we have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's great. Thanks so much.
I just want to follow up quickly, just saying that the Design View Committee, I know, has great interest in this signage. And also, the historical commission should be involved, too, in the image of the downtown. So, we'll be pulling in other folks to help out with this. And Betsy Ware overnight quickly pulled together an RFP for us to meet the deadline, so.
Yeah, we should be able to do something pretty quickly. And we've also targeted a couple of firms that may be interested in doing this work.
Three or four now, I think, yeah.
So, what we're hoping to do is to move very quickly on this, I think, as Mary and Betsy outlined. If we can get forward and get a group working on it, and get a good design consultant in place.
Great.
Through the January, February period, it's very difficult to install signs in the middle of snowbank. So, I think the DPW folks said, if we can get the, you know, begin to get some standards set up, and by the time spring comes around, they're refreshing it all, that's a good opportunity to catch them and they're renewing the places. So, good times. Okay. Good. And thank you all very much, Betsy and Mary particularly, for chasing down the, chasing down the grant, and Helen and her colleagues for following through and supporting it. So, let's, I think, all of us were at the meeting Monday night on the working committee. I don't think we need to go into great detail on all the specifics, but I will try to summarize and then ask people their thoughts since Monday. What we have been doing over the last months is organizing sidewalks, and many people from the board and others have participated in that. We've gone around and looked at each of the blocks in the town center to get a sense of, you know, the condition of the buildings and the uses and areas out there. We put that together in a small table, which I, you know, copy in there, but I won't pull it out, try to summarize what we saw. And I think there were three levels of changes that people anticipated. One was a set of changes that would affect the entire central business structure. For example, making housing or residential units available as a by right use, instead of having a special permit requirement. There were a series of other anticipated changes. For example, in the retail area, I'm asking, you know, perhaps putting in place zoning by laws that would encourage, if not require, that there be retail shops and similar uses on the ground floor, and that they have display windows. Because I think one of the, one of the consistent messages we heard from the economic consultant back several years ago, when she looked at it, was she said, "You need, you know, shopping interest, you need to extend people's interest in shopping all around the blocks to get the foot traffic, people to move through, and that's how people will then move from one shop to another and work there." So, that's, and then I think what we've been talking about is for each of the individual blocks, perhaps looking at changes in the height and massing of the buildings. But I think the discussion we had the other night says, we probably can't do that as a uniform set of zoning requirements, that we'll probably want to look at some blocks differently than others, in different heights. So, what we are likely to go ahead and do, I think, in the next weeks, is to take the Waterfield block, which we've had some development concepts, plans put together, and see what it would take to write up one or two different types of zoning regulations for that area. So, we know generally what could happen there. The question is, how do you write them up? One approach would be to basically modify our existing, what they call Euclidian, as Euclid, Ohio, I'm told, Euclidian zoning, and see if we can write that up in a way that makes sense. The other thing would be to explore the form-based codes, and we've had some examples of that. Or to, I think as Betsy and Mary have suggested, perhaps to look at a hybrid of those, where you change some things in the underlying zoning, and then superimpose some specific pieces there. So, that's what we got. The other thing we discussed on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, on that topic, with this water, if the Waterfield block is being targeted, how does that affect Church Street? Are we, because with our proposals, we said you can open it up. And so, they did anticipate going farther or beyond the, at least I understand to be what we mean by the town or property. So, I just want to know where we're heading before we get there.
My thinking was that we would include the full block and Church Street edges, down Waterfield, and then up along the MBTA, which is what the design teams looked at.
So, if we do that, I just want to keep alive, preserving those two houses. I don't care if their frontage gets modified, but I definitely want to make sure we don't just assume a blank slate on that stretch of Church Street.
I think what we discussed Monday night, if I recall correctly, was taking that block as a pilot and seeing, could you write up, using the different approaches, rough out, and take a look and see what that accomplishes, all the objectives we had in mind. I don't think we're, at that point, immediately going to go ahead and apply for rezoning of that area, but we'll see what comes of it.
I just want to put that out there.
Yeah. The other area we discussed in considerable detail was the area between, on Main Street, between the rotary and the river, short of the stop and shop area. What we've heard, I think, both in our sidewalks and from developers and others around there, that that's an area that could potentially see redevelopment proposals in the next, the next year or so, two years. And so, rather than sort of try to rezone it without a concept of what to do out there, I think it was the groups, the group sense that we perhaps ought to think about doing another set of design concept developments for that area. It's particularly a complex area, because it's now all on the floodplain. And you, there'd be very strict requirements on compensatory storage area and what you can do with parking. So, I think what we will, what we've asked Betsy to do is to go ahead and begin to think about putting together an RFP model on the one we did for the Waterfield block, that would get in some design consultants. And then perhaps again, use that one as a pilot along with Waterfield. These are two rather different sites, to see what we could do and drive those.
I also have the two volunteers who meet with me every Tuesday morning. We targeted that block for this week, and we're in the process of working on that.
Okay, good.
So, we should have information packages per site.
Okay. So, I think we have done all the base work of looking at the existing zoning codes for pros and cons, looking at the river stormwater regulations, looking at a series of those. So, I think, I'm guessing that within the next months or so, we can pull together a pretty coherent set of zoning and see if we can begin to bring some of it. I think, we won't spend a lot of time talking about it tonight, but I think that one of the next meetings, we ought to work with Betsy and see if there aren't some low-hanging fruit, some individual pieces that we could carve off and move to town meeting to take a look that would be beneficial. So, we'll be pushing on that.
And I'm also going to be meeting next week with the Smart Growth Alliance zoning people to get that rolling.
Okay. And then we, toward the end of the meeting, we discussed two grant opportunities, or at least one grant opportunity and a partial one. The state has, through the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, put together what they call a Compact Neighborhoods program. And I think this is perhaps accurately described as a reduced version of the state's 40R program. We looked at the 40R program, where if you built a considerable number of units in a smart growth area in near transit stations, the state would not only support the development of it, but it would also pay the town a certain stipend for each of the units that was put in. But I think at the time, we decided that they were looking for, you know, 100-unit sites, and we had nothing like that. This one is looking a much scaled down. They're looking for the town to think about rezoning for residential use, allowing residential use. They're talking, they're not putting a restriction number on the size of units. And there was discussion of the fact that if we, you know, if you move forward this program, towns and cities that adopted it would get some preference in their applications for infrastructure improvements. And Betsy has been researching that.
I prepared a two-pager for you, and I ended up having a discussion late yesterday with two people who run this program. And it was effective as of November 12th. The program, there are no guidelines. It's a policy. There are no regulations, because it would have taken them 18 months to make regulations. Basically, what they're doing is they're piggybacking it on the 40R legislation, but they're lessening it. And so, that 40R, the requirements were up to 20 units an acre for multifamily and eight units per acre for single family. And what this proposal is, is for, I think it's eight units in density for multifamily and four for single family. And they-
Which is clearly within the range we're looking at.
Which is clearly in the range we're looking at. They, there's a process by which you can apply to become eligible. And what it is, is you propose to them a site or sites. They come out and look at it. We work out some language in terms of, they make a determination of whether it's an eligible location. One of the key elements is that you have to generate 1% of your existing housing stock into this compact neighborhood. So, that would be-
Over a period of years?
Over a period of, I think it's five years. And so, our 1% would be 79 units. So, it can be-
That's the range of what we had talked about.
It's actually under the range.
Well, it's under the range, but I mean, it's within the range.
Yeah, it's within the range. Yeah, so.
Because if I recall, the housing study that we did about a year, half a year ago, estimated a demand for several hundred units within the next five, 10 years.
Right, right. So, as the two people who I spoke with yesterday explained, it's kind of a negotiation. However, there is an application process. The units that are, are to be provided under this program are to be by right units, meaning no special permit process, a very reasonable process to get these units in their location. In exchange for that, 40R basically has a program where they provide X amount of dollars per unit that you create. This has no such stipend, or no such carrot. However, what it does is, the state, you are, your community is put on a higher preference level for state infrastructure improvements. So, for example, if we need something from the MBTA, or if we need something from the MWRA, or Mass Works, or, there was, there was also a reference in the discussion yesterday to a link with the Mass School Board. So, it's being explored.
So, it could conceivably include everything from help to refresh the street furniture and sidewalks up to more significant.
Right, right.
So, I'm clear, this requires rezoning of a certain size area, like an overlay smart growth kind of?
It can be either base zoning or an overlay zone.
Easiest to do an overlay, so we don't have to disrupt. But, we'd have to, we'd have to pick a district that we target, and we'd have to propose something consistent with what they want, which I understand is a little influx, and then we'd have to get it passed through town meetings.
But if you did, if you modified the CBD zoning to allow residential units by right, which is what we're talking, I think that would begin to qualify, or do they have to have very specific sites?
This is, this is a long, they may have opened it just yesterday, but this is something that we can't really meet until we have a town meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, we have. But as part of the Town Center zoning, we'd have to do this, yeah.
So, then the items that may go before town meeting might be housing and rezoning.
Conceivably, yeah. Okay. Excellent.
This is going off to, beyond this, to the MSGA Executive Committee?
Okay. So, that's, so we're going to, we're going to have a, we're going to sit down with the Town Center Executive Coordinating Committee tomorrow morning at 8:15. And we're going to brief the town manager and the Board of Selectmen on this process, and see if it's worth pursuing on there, to make sure that people understand what the concept is. For the most part, it sounds as though their threshold for participating is what we're already thinking about for the Town Center. So, if this would then make the town eligible for infrastructure or other grants, that would be, that would be certainly useful.
This program was actually brought to my attention from, by the Mass Smart Growth Alliance, by Ina Anderson and Andre Leroux, who called me up sometime last week and basically said, "You should be aware of this program." And we have a very good working relationship with the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. And we really think that this program dovetails really nicely with what you're trying to do in the Town Center. And additionally, there was some discussion about whether there might be some additional funds. The state is making their Priority Development Fund available for kind of fast-tracking a couple of projects. So, this, this may mean $15,000 to $20,000 for additional study or legal advice.
Yeah. I mean, that would certainly help defray the legal costs of getting the zoning language developed.
Is this part of the governor's initiative, or a hundred thousand?
It was 10,000 units a year for the next 10 years. Yes. So, 100,000 units.
I always tend to do things pro rata, to see what kind of sense that makes.
I ended up going to that conference where he announced that, those figures in this initiative. And then, everybody was scrambling to try to figure out where the beef was, so to speak, where the language was to, and this is what's come out of it.
Just as a, I don't know about the metrics, and it's unfair to do a pro rata, but it's a good place to start. I mean, we're, what, 20,000 out of 6 million? So, or what?
23,000.
23,000.
More like 3.4, 3.5 million.
So, we're what, half a percent, a third of a percent?
I don't think we're going to fit all 10,000 here.
No, but I was trying to think, 100,000, even, even 300 units over 10 years is just, maybe that's doable.
Well, we were, well, we were talking about, we were talking about a couple hundred, a couple years ago, so.
Those Globe supplements for the regional and Seacross Winchester, they actually added a lot more housing and a lot of our pure communities. Yeah, it's interesting. It's not by any means quiet.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, if this gives us an opportunity to refocus, continue to focus the development of the center, which I think that our general argument has been it's better to focus it in the center than to put a lot of pressure on the neighborhoods where there's relatively little space.
I agree, Mary. You have made the point right.
Okay, good. So, we'll pursue that and find out more details on it. But, Betsy, thank you. That's good.
There's been some indication, too, that we heard the other day, that they are seeking out Winchester.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I missed the message.
The proponents, I don't know who they was.
The proponents. What happened was Ina Anderson and Andre Leroux contacted me. They said that this program, they thought, was going to work very well, and that somehow Winchester may be some form of pilot program, or kind of an early bird in terms of moving forward. So.
It's an increasingly more familiar role to be out in the vanguard for Winchester, but it is new since the millennium, actually.
Well, that's true. I mean, we started, we started out with our stabilization funds, and we're going from there.
So, I did speak with the two people who were leading the program at Department of Housing and Community Development yesterday. And we were playing telephone tech for a couple of days. So, they seem very amenable to continuing the dialogue.
That's great. You know, it's-
I mean, I think, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying, you know, it's really gratifying, I think, when we can find opportunities that, I mean, the perfect grant opportunity is one that allows you to pursue the lines of thinking that you were going along in the first place, you know, not something that's going to run in conflict with them. So, this is, sounds like it's potentially, we'll know more as we go on, but potentially a win-win.
Well, I think it also points up another opportunity that, and Betsy is beginning to get, be very expert at this. If you have a pretty clear idea of what you want to be doing and where you want to be going generally, then you can go out and search for grant applications and grant opportunities. And I think we're, we're beginning to build a sort of momentum on doing a lot of that, and that's good for a town that's very tight with- For a town that's very tight with its budget, and has, hasn't a lot to spend on some of these projects, this is, this is a really, I think, a very useful contribution. Okay. The last piece under the town center is the Smart Growth Alliance itself. We're into year two of the technical assistance grant that's been funded by the Barr Foundation, the Ford Foundation. And I think, Betsy, they called the other day and said that if we were making progress, which I believe we would be on this, that there's an opportunity for a year three funding for another upwards of perhaps another seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, in technical assistance, but I would expect that if we begin to move forward on some of this, we're going to need, you know, a lot of assistance in actually writing up the zoning and explaining it.
So I saw this now, and want to, Tampa, or wherever, just reinforce that. It's absolutely right when you're going before a town meeting, you don't just sashay.
Yeah.
No.
Well, we're the only community in this first round, and I have been trying to pretty much hammer that home all the way along, is that CDCs operate very differently from communities.
That's right.
Yeah. This is a really different process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comments on this, on the town center issues?
Very encouraging, very encouraging.
Okay, let's move on to subdivisions. I think Maureen, you had asked Betsy if she would, get your quick update of the-
This is in very much draft form, and-
Oh, I know it is. I hear from her once in a while.
And the, I did not get this to the engineering department until a couple of days ago, so, but, and they are in the process of reviewing their files as well. There are, we, we actually, we were able, from last year's memo, we were able to cross a couple off the list. There are a couple that are, are moving forward. Fitzgerald Ave being one of them, hopefully, and Alice Lane being another one that should be finished by the spring. There are a couple of real oldies that, I will say on kind of what, in addition to Maureen's comment, what request for this, the, when Beth Rudolph was reviewing the Alice Lane project, she made a recommendation that we should make some adjustments in terms of the security, particularly since there hadn't been a change in several years or an adjustment. Some of these projects go back twenty years.
Exactly.
So we have a couple of projects where, for example, the Tanya Acres subdivision off of Ridge Street, we're presently holding twenty-one thousand, which seems to me to be woefully insufficient.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So what would be the next step?
Well, I think the engineering department is reviewing these.
Well, I mean, I just want to say that it's a huge amount of work for us to go and start reviewing.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I know, yeah.
I think it would help us if we could prioritize, you know, every six months, we can, you know, prioritize the top three that we want to work on.
Yeah, that would be great, that would be great.
It's huge amount of work for us to be out in the field trying to verify the conditions and to be reviewing our files.
Yeah.
So I think, you're right.
That's-
Yep.
Exactly.
Let me suggest, let me suggest that we have to follow up on Beth's point, which I think is correct. Betsy, to the extent that you have time in the next weeks or shortly after in January, we follow up on these and find out. A lot of them, I know you hadn't, you have to call the banks and get ahold to find out if there is a security deposit. I think getting a, sort of a, you know, fleshing out the list to make sure we know what the securities are or are not and things like that. And then I would, then I would think we would probably want to both call and send a letter to the developers and, and get some sense of whether they're willing to move forward or not, or whether they're capable of moving forward or not. And I would suggest we pick off the ones that are, you know, show some willingness to move forward, and even have Beth and the engineering folks look at that. If they move forward and do it on themselves, then we don't need to up the security deposit. But if we can use that as a, as a leverage point to get them to move. But we might as well focus on, focus, everybody's efforts on the ones that are most likely to move first, and then work our way down the list.
That's generally my personal style, so that, it feels good, you know, pick a few and keep going. That said, my impression is some of these can all be basically approached the same way, which is to say, "We're going to need counsel, and we may as well," I mean, I've been around this circle so many times, I mean, it's like I know every step, every post along the way. And that if we're going to bring in counsel, just, I think we're getting to the point where time has come just to turn it over, and that's kind of, instead of like two at a time, three at a time, it's just like, here's the remainder, send the legal, the town's letter on, you know, from town, from whatever, we probably, it will be a land use council, but anyway, I think, I'd like to see this escalate because the time has long come and gone.
Certainly, certainly got some of them.
Let's think of that as a second step. Betsy had contacted and formally found out.
I'll understand, but I think-
We haven't pursued some of them aggressively for a year or more. Let's find out if they're willing to move, fine. If they're not, then I would just move to that.
Right, because it sounds like some of them are in motion.
Yeah, I would say the first page of my December eleventh memo, Alice Lane, that is, they've, they've basically said they'll finish by June of two thousand and thirteen. Briarwood Lane, the developer has relatively little to finish. There is an outstanding order of conditions on the project. Several, in fact, a year ago, the developer was interested in finishing up, and then I don't know what happened, but-
That's the point, isn't it?
Right. And so we had a couple, there's a very small list of items left for that one. And then Fitzgerald Ave, there's a new attorney involved in the hopes of resolution of that situation.
Chairman? Question, then a suggestion. Beth, did I hear you say over twenty? I count ten.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I was just saying-
Are there others beyond this?
Maybe others beyond the ones that are here, I don't know.
So here's, here's what would help me, at least in terms of a management process. I mean, I think the, the, I'll call this the story list, is important to understand some of the context, but something that's a chart, which is the, the subdivision down, down the rows, down one column. And the second column is the risk to the town, either in terms of not, it's, it's at risk because it's-
Insufficient security or otherwise.
Well, insufficient security, or unfinished road, or unfinished, unfinished lighting, or, or if, or if it's lack of answers, whatever the risks are to the town, just a couple phrases there.
Okay.
And then the third column, status and urgency, one of that, so that we can look down the list and then help with this.
Oh, and they-
And their point, and their point contact, I think, yeah.
Okay.
But I think putting that together, and then, you know, that would be an expansion of what we have here. Put that together, have Betsy contact them, see if she gets a response, and-
It's an expansion and a contraction.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's-
Expansion of information, contraction of space, yes.
Yeah.
It allows us to be a little bit more organized about it, I appreciate that. And I think actually, I think once we've got, you know, sort of that in hand in that way, I think actually then we, then we can, I think Beth's suggestion is an excellent one, you know, that we can sort of pick up, pick up the hot, the hot ones and get them done.
Figure out which is the hot ones.
This one off of Ridge Street, which is twenty years plus. Right.
Rich Mary?
The one off of Ridge Street.
Oh, yeah, Tanya.
Which I know the neighborhood is pretty upset about that. So I would think that would move to priority.
Well, let's take a stab at finding out where they are with the developers, and then come back and do exactly that, as to pick a list.
Before any of you on this board, I remember, we did have these charts, and we were trying to work with long, about like three predecessors of path. So it's not, these people are just sitting on it, so that's why. And, and, I mean, yeah, one more chance, but let's, a month, let's just, you know, reply, like certified now or something, get an answer, and let's really get-
But to Beth's point, we don't want to start seven.
Exactly.
Because we're not going to be able to manage completion of seven. We want to pick two or three that we're actually going to make progress on.
Exactly right.
And depending on the size of the work that needs to be done, I mean, the, the planning board could rescind some of them, but then, but then we're running into the problem of we have to finish them and put them out to public bid, and I don't think we want to go in that direction.
Another column, your discretion, what are, what are the prime options?
Okay.
You know, which is, is the next, what is the next option for us?
Exactly, because some of those have risks, you know, we need to think about.
It is, it's, it's, even though we all inherited some of these, some of those, it feels embarrassing.
It's not just, it's not right for our, the people who either live on them or in them.
Okay, good. Okay, so we'll, we'll update, we'll move it to a chart form, get an update, complete the information on the, on the security or lack thereof. Do a quick call or letter to them to say, find out the status, and then come back and think perhaps you and Beth want to sit down and pick out a top few that look feasible, given people's time and budget, and then we'll chase those.
Can we do this?
Get legal counsel to chase them.
I think it's appropriate at this point, really, certify with some kind of law.
Okay, well, they can, don't worry about that. Okay, let's move on to project updates. There's a long list here. I think what we want to do is rattle through these rather quickly, rather than spend hours at them, because I think most of them have had a fair amount of technical discussion in the past. Davidson Park, Mr. Batara?
Yes, I think that update on town meeting, which is town meeting, decided to approve the study, which is different from the project, and the, the, there hasn't been a lot of action since then that I'm aware of, but the, the motion, to me, was clear because I wrote it, but other people may have had some misunderstandings. The, my expectation, because it involved both planning and engineering, that the town planner and the town engineer would, would both be responsible, collaborate, which I think they were going to do anyway, but that was my thought process, and I drafted a, is it a three-page memo?
Yep.
As a straw suggestion process, I haven't had any contact with anyone yet on that. So that's, that's the process here, and just short on this, is as I was doing the due diligence on that, that motion, I found out that there were different factual understandings of what the park is, or what it could be, and what the, what needed to be done. And I, I found most of them relatively well taken, but I thought some part of the process could narrow down what's disputed of direction, what's just a misunderstanding of facts, because people coming from different perspectives and information. So, but anyway, so at some point, I expected, I guess, be in contact with the town manager on this. It's been a busy time for everybody, so I will see there. I would turn it over, let me, let me frame this this way. There have been some overtures, or some due diligence, or awareness, I guess, of grant opportunities. Part of the process here is, while we're proceeding with the study, is be mindful of, of funding sources for the final project, in order, or even some funding sources that help with the study. And the seventy-five thousand dollar number, Beth, I took as, from your guidance, from the capital planning proposal, which it struck me as reasonable enough. And so maybe it is reasonable enough, because I heard a few comments it was too much, and I heard a few comments it was too little, so that suggests that. But on the other hand, if there's opportunities for matching, there could always be extra money for surprises. That being said, just, the thought is that the, the study work would proceed in parallel with the, I'll call it drum beating, or just being vigilant about opportunities. And there have been some, and I won't be able to give as much detail as Betsy Warewood, and somewhere I just saw it in the packet here, where you did outline what's been going on in your town planner memo.
Mm-hmm.
But I just think it's, just to recap, there's, there's opportunities for, opportunities don't mean we're going to get it. There's opportunities for some matching funds on the study side, and then there's some, some firms that might be, some firms, some organizations that might be interested in, contributing for the actual development. Back to Lance's point, when you know what you're looking for, sometimes you find it.
I think the, Betsy can fill us in, but I think that she and Lane had some discussions with EPA in this respect, and there's apparently one point two to one point five million dollars in, in a, in a fund that's been set up as a result of the settlement on the WR Grace property up in Woburn. And one of the questions is, you know, to what extent Winchester and the Everjonah through here would be, would be eligible for some of that, and that would-
That would certainly help.
That would fund a very large study, or perhaps even a piece of it could get something going on it.
Yeah, because here's the real problem, as, as we know in terms of capital funds, we're, you know, we've got probably nothing over the next five years.
So you, Drew had sent an email around the other day, which I thought was good, suggesting that at some point when, I don't know whether it was before or after the holiday period, that you, Beth, Betsy, the town manager, perhaps Concom, and the sort of core people get it, and I think the process you laid out here makes good sense. I think it would be a good exercise to go through and draft out what people think ought to be in the RFP, and use that as a device to hammer out exactly what we want to know and how to move it ahead. So I would suggest you do that, as, as-
We als, also did submit a letter of intent to the Gulf of Maine Council, and that was purely a letter of intent. It's a pretty competitive process, but if, if we're asked to be a finalist, we'll be asked to do, submit a full application.
And what sort of funding would that bring?
And that funding is anywhere from twenty-five thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, which we, which we would have to match, which was the seventy-five thousand match.
Point of the article.
Okay, so that would, that would provide the match with-
So, and that funding, my understanding is that in early January, they would let us know. And then the full grant would be submitted, and funding would be available, I think, in late spring.
Okay, so-
You asked the dots on the developments, why, what is the Gulf of Maine Council? And the Gulf of Maine runs from, basically from-
Nova Scotia down to the Cape.
The Cape to Nova Scotia, the Bay of Fundy is thought of as the Gulf of Maine, and they're interested in Gulf of Maine watershed issues, which, here's an issue that I really have only just begun to learn about, which is the fish ladder issue, which is fish ladder up the Everjonah, and, you know, the Mystic, let me put it that way first, and then up the Everjonah, Tributary, and then Horn, Prong, Brook. And that might be a connection to why they might be interested. So, but that, that's to be determined.
And I think in, in Betsy's journeys and feeling out for grants, she also found there's a private group up in, is it New Hampshire or Maine?
Yeah.
That's interested in fish habitats, and we're looking, it might be considered, might be considered putting some money into, look at fish ladders, or the health of the, if we could prove the health of the-
When the, the central-
It snowballs along in a way, that's interesting.
The Central Falls Dam project, when that was put out to bid, there wasn't enough money for a couple of the add alternates. So basically, there were some people who were concerned about the fish issue. And so actually, what has happened is there's, there's a group of volunteers being assembled to do a fish habitat study in the spring.
Sounds very cool.
And then, in the meantime, well, what, what's happened is the, the town manager, for obvious reasons, doesn't want anything to, to interfere with that work on, on the Central Falls Dam. So in any case, so that project will be moving forward, and then when that project is done, potentially, we, and that project was designed to include a fish ladder, so, but there's no money for it. So in any case, I, before I ended up talking with Rich, well, actually, as I was talking with Richard about it, the, I think it was DEP, has a website that has a number of grants, including private and, and public grants. And I ended up contacting a private foundation based in Exeter, New Hampshire, that funds conservation-related studies. And they, I talked with, it's a family-
Foundation.
Foundation.
Yeah, those are very good.
So I ended up talking with the head of this foundation, who indicated to me that the way to get a project funded was to get one of the foundation members on board with the project. And it happens that one of the foundation members lives in Cambridge and actually works very closely with the Mystic River watershed.
Wow.
So I actually have a call set up with her tomorrow to talk with her about this. And it may, it may not mean a lot of money, and it may be something that, you know, we're not able to do, but it may lead into other projects.
One of the, the big picture things that I, I had detected is there's a lot of money that's habitat-driven.
I agree.
And, and we haven't, as a town, tapped into that very much, and so that's, where's- And, and we haven't, uh, as a town tapped into that very much. And so that's, whereas there's very little money for stormwater management.
Oddly enough.
Flooding, you're on your own.
But, but if we, if we're able to get planning money and habitat money, then there's more money in the regular budget for stormwater management.
Right.
The more, the more what heckens are planted, the much the better.
Okay, so that's, I think, uh, so I would, if, it sounds like if we want to, uh, qualify for some of the funding in January, we should probably move sooner rather than later in, in hammering out, uh, the scope for an RFP so that, it sounds like if we had that prepared, then again, we could, uh, be in line to sort of at least compete effectively for some of the funding.
The, the other thing and the people that Elaine and I were speaking with, um, from EPA Mystic River Watershed, um, that EPA settlement, um, the general gist from EPA and, um, and Mystic River Watershed is that since Wilburn and Winchester were the primary communities impacted, that they will probably get the bulk of that money.
Good.
So I think we should, uh, that's, it's a very sizable amount, so.
It is.
It's okay, good.
Something you can really do something.
Let's move on. Wrightlock Farm, Mary, you've had a series of meetings and
We, uh, the advisory committee has put together, um, a list of suggestions for the, um, the farm and some design criteria for the southwest corner.
Okay.
Um, as a last resort and asking that, um, the selectmen wait and not do anything for the time being to give the, the conservancy time to um, continue in their work and, um, perhaps, um, take over the, the farm eventually. So, um, that, that's a three to four-year window. So, uh, on Monday, we had the information in the board of selectmen's packet and I thought they were going to have an executive session on it that evening, but I guess it didn't happen. Because it's been postponed till this coming Monday night when the advisory committee thought we were going in to have a discussion with the board of selectmen from their executive session. So it's all been moved out and the meeting with the advisory committee, I believe, is going to be in January after the holidays. We, we don't have a set date on that, but the executive session is to happen Monday evening. Okay, so that's where we stand.
Good. Um, okay, MBTA reconstruction, I presume they haven't, Beth? No, nothing yet? Okay.
Did you say the project, new project manager comes on December seventeenth, something like that?
The new head, the general manager.
Yes, correct, right, so.
I, I don't know whether, I guess maybe it might be either they had a rush to sign all the contracts before she starts
Or they're waiting, yeah.
Or they're waiting to sign all the contracts until after she starts, so.
Who knows?
Probably one or the other.
So this is a new manager for the project?
That's right.
Oh, oh, okay.
The whole team.
The whole thing.
The general manager has to sign the contract, so.
Okay.
Talk about no money.
Probably wants to understand what they're signing before they do it.
It's a common, it's a common problem.
They, they had to be rushed to try to get all their contracts or wonder where they signed before that.
Speaking of which, as a follow-up, not on here, but it's like a one sentence. I did pass around, Lance, it maybe got stuck at your place, but the, um, green line extension work is moving now. And it's
Heard that on the radio yesterday.
It's happening. And I think as we move into the management plan, maybe that will come up later, but we, we should, I think, figure out how we're going to be, um, somehow connecting Winchester to the green line extension.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, parking management plan, let's see, I've not had any recent discussions with the town manager, but I understand they're still advancing on it.
Yeah, the, let's see, in, he's working on experimental, there's a, apparently a company that is willing to come in and do ninety-day trial runs for parking meters. So he is trying to get that company in to put in five meters, um, across from Black Horse Tavern.
Individual meters?
Yeah, individual meters.
Portable or movable concrete stands or something?
Like at each parking space?
Yeah, and it would only be for a limited number of spaces.
I've discussed, I've discussed with, uh, the town manager that the
Took a long time to get them out of the town center.
The working committee was not very much in favor of that.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like a good idea.
It's worth experimenting to see what they do, but I thi- I think what, I think what they're looking at is the individual meter heads that will take credit cards and such like that, but I, I suggested to them that that was not going to be sort of a very popular uh, solution with the committee, but, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Let along the Black Horse Tavern.
Well, yeah, because I, well, well, I don't think it's, I don't think
Well, this is in that space, yeah, it's actually in the
In the Everjonah lot, oh, okay.
Okay.
But isn't it, it's the outer Abidjonah area?
Two-hour spaces.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So, so you just avoid the meters? I mean, I'm just trying to think how this works if we're putting in only five.
Exactly, that's what I, that's what I'm having a little trouble with.
I think it was partly, I mean, it's obviously it's experimental, but I think it was partly to solve the problem of people who wanted buy individual day passes. I mean, right now the spaces are two-hour spaces, so.
I would just
Oh, so you could get a whole day?
You could buy, you know, more than two hours, you could buy the whole day or whatever, right? Because right now those treasurer's offices sell the other passes.
So, so what is the test of, the test is of that op- that tariff, I'll call it, that parking regime?
Well, I think his intent was, and, and I'm not sure, he hasn't decided which spaces he wants to take. It was either going to be in the permit spaces or in the two-hour spaces, but in the two hour, you know, either way, it's intended to service that group of people who want to park long within two hours and up to a full day.
And then in lieu of the machines that would be in the Abidjonah lot and the Waterfield lot, the town treasurer is selling one-day passes. And those one-day passes are basically two, two dollars a day. And, um, you can come in and get as, buy as many passes as you want, but they're only good for like a month.
I mean, I just want to say, we, we're working real hard to get clutter off the streets and I know that the town worked twenty years ago very hard to remove the meters and to bring back the single meters would be.
Yeah, I, I've meant, let Mr. Howard know that I don't think that would be an acceptable approach. I mean, it's worth, it's worth perhaps trying the meters to see what they do, but I don't think it's going to be a solution.
But will they take them away?
Well, I presume we don't pay for them.
Yeah, they're, they're only nine, they're ninety-day trials.
I don't, uh, I don't know what involves, I, I think question is, does that involve any permanent installation or not, so.
I would, I would hope not.
I think, I think the consensus of the committee and around town is to get, you know, we do not want the clutter of individual meters, plus which I think to expand that to a very large application is going to basically mean you either have to contract for somebody to maintain those or you have to bring somebody on board, you know, from the engineering department to manage and service all of those things. And I think one of the consistent things we heard about from
Well, they have such
Discussion is to keep the, is to keep the labor costs down.
I know, I was going to say, I think our engineering department, of course, they have such copious amounts of free time. Sorry, a little sarcasm there.
As an aside, I've heard from, uh, Judy Manzo, Chamber of Commerce, that the early stages seemed to have had some impact, already positive impact on parking in the town center with the, uh, uh, the, the outer ring, I guess, with the, uh, the commuter, uh, passes being restricted to residents and high school parking being adjusted. So,
Yeah.
So there's posi- so there's some positive perceptions already of the, of the plan.
I mean, the number of us
I don't know if you have a current count, but you, you, you put together some numbers a short while ago. I remember the number of permits sold and
Um, I don't know if it's
Yeah, okay.
A number of us are, when we're going through town are checking and there seems to be many more spaces in the, the red zone available.
Okay, uh, traffic and circulation study, we've talked, I've talked several times about getting together the edits and, uh, policy directions and then we have, apologize, I've not had time to do that. Perhaps, uh, work on that over the holiday period and then we can set up a working committee to go over and
And don't forget, there's a pedestrian, uh,
Yeah, we've, uh, Matt, uh, he sent that all in and I think it's a matter of just, you know, we've got it.
Well, we want the whole, um, or I want, of course, uh, the whole planning board to see this.
Well, yeah, and I think what we were talking about a little bit with Matt was that when we get the pieces together, we may be able to get their GIS map and simply add the pedestrian lines on one of their base maps and, uh, add that to the piece. So I think it'd be very useful. Um, Greystone, Betsy, you had some notes on this.
I had a draft that I
I saw that.
Handed out.
Yep.
And I started going through in detail the, um, the various, um, the various permits. And, uh, there, there seems to be a lot of little details that are not being constructed per the original plans. But basically this draft letter outlines the two larger issues. Um, one is the paint color and one is the open space. And there's, there's a big sign out in front saying that there's only a couple of units left, so it strikes me that, um, these issues should get resolved prior to the last occupancy permits.
Okay, so what I've
Beth, you haven't seen a conservation restriction, have you?
No.
So what I, let me, uh, let me read the letter, uh, because I've just got the draft this evening, read it tomorrow and, uh, if the board doesn't object, we'll send it off to, uh,
That's fine.
To Mr. Wile and, and Mr. Gallagher. And, uh, see what, because, because at the first level is their response, you know, to whether they want to enforce this or not. So I think we should get them up to speed and ask them what they want, then have a discussion of what they want to do with it and move quickly on it. So, okay, good.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that.
Okay. Uh, site plan guidelines, these are the, uh, uh, we updated the street and the stormwater management, uh, guidelines in the subdivisions and based on Beth's recommendations and others. And I think the intent was to, what we volunteered was to help the Board of Appeals by incorporating those into their site guidelines so they could adopt a current set. So the idea would be to have all of the towns' bodies working on the same current set of of, uh, of review guidelines.
I have been working on those for a while and as time permits, and they're pretty close. Um, but before I make them prime time, I'd like to have a couple of people look at them, including the engineering department.
Okay.
So, um, we're close, probably within the next week before, um,
During your holiday vacation.
So, on a follow-up, um, not to put my favorite engineer on the spot, but what, um, what are we doing on the, um, yeah, right. The redesign, like the construction piece of it, because we were wanting to ultimately, uh, sort of join forces here.
The construction manual, yeah. We have a draft of it, so we just have to
You gotta find time to read it, because, you know, I understand.
Okay, well, it sounds, it sounds like that within the next several months we could have that.
You think you can do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, 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 but yeah, thanks, yeah. Because we really would love to get it, uh, coordinated with our subdivision.
Okay, uh, in the last article, we, we, in our meeting with the Board of Appeals earlier this, uh, summer, we had discussed a, a sign-off form that could be used to ensure that
Yes.
Both the, both the ZB, both the ZBA, the planning boards, the engineering's and the, and the Concom's
So how do we
Requirements for pursuit. And I think we were going to try to, Joan Langsum had said that she had
Yeah, Joan had said, and then, um, I had emailed her a while ago and I think it just dropped off the radar, so I will
So we, we need to get the forms and then we, you said you had some others.
Yeah.
So I think the next step is simply to get the forms together, to col- collate it and get, uh, people to review it and make sure it's reasonable. And then we could, necessarily the, we can endorse it and give it to the ZBA to let them, uh, decide what they endorse.
So can we put it on an agenda, like, and target it?
Well, I think we need to get the forms and then I think
Well, okay, but I need to know that.
What I'm going to suggest to Nigel
I can have it for the next meeting.
Yeah, what I'll suggest to Nigel is that we, you know, get a two-person working committee to sit down with Beth.
Yeah, because I think it would be, it's really important.
I think that would be outstanding, get that done. Oh, I have no question.
Okay, uh, let's move on to the master plan status, uh,
Quick question.
Yes.
Just as, in this miscellaneous, um, again, thank you. So I know the bypass work I saw was going through and looked good. Um, do we have a, I, I lost the planting component of it. What's the
Uh, well, they have to do the final paving, so we'll do that in the spring and then I think we're going to work with Julie.
Great. Thanks.
This is which stretch of the bike, bike plan?
On the other side of the road, from Town Hall.
It's good, it's good.
Town Converse Place.
I was just curious, I saw that on a detail, I noticed the, uh, we're right up on, um, Mount Vernon Street where it comes out to the sidewalk by the bridge, where the hedges are really overgrown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of, um, tie, wood ties
Yeah.
In the paving. And is that going to be removed?
They have to do the final layer between them, so it'll be, you know, an inch and a half higher than it is now. I'd have to go out and see.
Yeah, you should take a look at that because it looks like something that was overlooked in the construction.
Well, they may, if it's forms, they may be keeping it there.
No, it's, it's old, it's old railroad ties that were used in the garden structure, from what I can tell. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, master plan, Drew, you were working or beginning to work on scheduling the next sessions.
This, we're going to be sending out the, uh, the doodles, uh,
Okay.
For
Yankee doodles.
Okay.
We have two thousand thirteen now, so just a little, seventh, eighth, fourteenth, fifteenth are going to be the choices. And I think um, the commit, the master plan steering committee wanted, preferred a seven-thirty start was the read that I got. So, actually, Betsy, um, thinking about one of the problems we had before, which was, uh, rooms. Uh, that's going to be a, a Wynton Club period.
Oh, geez, yes.
Um, can you explore?
Not that we don't love them, I mean, don't get me wrong.
What's, is that it?
Okay, so this is for January seventh, eighth, fourteenth or fifteenth. So I will have Joan.
Check those.
Yeah, I just sent an email.
Drew, do you want to consider the library main room again?
I, I, I do as a backup, but I don't really like it.
Really?
Well, anywhere within earshot of the town hall during the Wynton Club is not going to be quiet.
If we don't have, if we run out of rooms, like we were, we were desperate last time. If any data doesn't work, let me know.
Okay.
I think that, that works pretty well, myself.
I do, too.
You liked it?
I like it.
I think the library's
I, I guess I have a preference to this, to the bigger room, but
Not that big.
Okay.
And it's, just to remind her
And while we're talking about doodle surveys, I need doodle surveys completed by a couple of people.
Sorry.
I just assume that mine, uh, is flexible enough.
I think, I think, I think I'm up to date.
Okay, okay. Because we need to, we need to start getting wrong.
There were a lot, it just happened that you hit Thursdays with a Mac read form, like it, it just shifted all down.
What I tried to do is shift it to first and third Thursdays. And if second and fourth work better, then
It's, for me, it's not consistent. It's just where I didn't, where I marked, I wasn't available. I'm not available. And I work quite a lot that where I wasn't available and I actually am available for a lot of them.
Okay, well, we'll get those together. Okay, uh, let's, we can, I think we should take up minutes, move through those fairly quickly.
Yeah, quickly.
We have minutes for Thursday, October twenty-fifth meeting. So I'll ask if there are any critical changes, any substantive changes that the members would like to
Little edits.
Okay, I have some small editorial changes.
Case three, just to make sure I got it right. It says there will be a tour of Wellesley Town Center. Wasn't that Wellesley High School?
Yes.
It's Wellesley High School, yeah.
Anyway, so a motion to approve is amended.
Oh, so.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, we'll leave.
Why don't you give them all?
Leave, well, why don't you wait till, when we get them all together?
No, I know, but give them all to me, you know.
We'll do it all at once when we get them all done. I'll give them all to you. Okay, let's pick up, uh, November twenty, uh, this is November first. Uh, are there, do the board members have any?
Again, I had more edits on this. I don't know if you want to hear about them.
Okay, there was one, um, this is Mary, there was a, I don't quite know what was intended in that paragraph, but I was reading it very quickly and it didn't make
Did I mark that up?
Sense.
Oh, yeah. Can I send this through?
Sure, you can, yeah, you can send that in to Liz, yeah.
We can hold on to that.
Okay, I'll, I'll mark this one, Liz, so you'll know, Mary, it's, okay. Uh, are there other, uh, Maureen, any other changes to November first that were significant?
Anything you guys really want to hear about, just, um,
Okay, uh, so we have a motion to accept the minutes of November first.
So we'll
As, as, as potentially amended.
As potentially amended, okay. We have a second? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, how are you gonna hold off that paragraph?
Uh, I'll just, uh, Mary's going to submit the correct, it's not, I don't think it's substantive change, it's a garbled sentence.
Except for the bottom paragraph of page two.
Maybe, do you mind? Maybe I did it, clarified it, because I did a bunch of edits like that with paragraphs.
Bottom paragraph of page two.
Nope, I'll let you guys.
Yeah.
Actually, I did here. Um, would, let's see, so it should not be located on an edge, which would limit the amount of windows, period. Um, it might be located on an island in the middle of the store, is how I did it.
Yeah, so it may be, it may be changing it to pharmacy area or clarify the sentence, okay. With those changes, all right, so we have a motion on the floor and second. Do any other further changes to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good, okay. Uh, and the last one we have is November fifteen. Uh, are there any changes and edits?
I had sent some in, which I
Okay.
Made a copy of, you got those?
Okay, good. Uh, Mr. Botero?
Were those mine or were those Liz's?
These were, it looks like you did these.
Okay.
So if, if not, I'll just pass it over. But I thought I'd go to you.
We'll combine all of these, okay. Okay.
Motion approved as amended.
As amended, I think I don't need this one then.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, please.
Second.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes of November fifteenth as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Done, okay. And Maureen, I will give these.
Abstained because I wasn't there.
Please pass these to.
Thank you.
Okay.
While we're collating, can I bring up a small point? I see in our packet we have, well, two things, but the last thing is a handwritten letter about the CVS.
Ah, yes.
And, well, it gives some addresses, it's actually not signed.
Right.
And I, I am concerned, I mean, I, I want to include as much citizen input as possible, but I thought we had a policy that people had to identify themselves.
Yes.
Well, there, I didn't, I questioned that as well. And it, it does indicate that these people are the residents of.
Yeah, but my problem is honestly, I have the same issue.
It would be preferable that it be signed, they did indicate clearly who was supporting it.
Well, yeah, but at this point, without signatures, you know, it's, somebody's reporting something and you don't know.
This is the point, it's referring to five addresses and we don't know whether those people really believe it or not. It just seems a little, not sure it belongs on the public record.
Yeah, I don't think so, I mean, you know, I.
Okay, so I, I wasn't aware that that was a policy, but if, if you don't want anything that hasn't been signed, we can certainly contact these people and have them sign it.
Maybe if you ask the town clerk for the names and address and just, just, just see if they can contact someone there and ask them.
Okay.
Someone to sign it.
As a courtesy, I mean, they did, they did take the effort to write it and.
Yeah.
We could take.
I respect that, but you know, but the bottom line is, you know, it's like, if you don't have something that's signed, I mean, you know, it's kind of come from.
What I'm suggesting is we ask the town clerk if she can identify and call somebody there and have Joan call them and see if they can quickly identify somebody, perhaps they'll sign it, if not, we can delete it. I said we can ask the town clerk, ask Joan to do it, Maureen.
Yes, yes, I think that's the way.
All right, let me suggest that on the next round of town meeting, one of the things we'd like to, we need to do is to start our annual review process for Betsy so that we can, so we can back up the budget recommendations when they come and do. And then I will rework the agenda to bring us up to date on the town center materials after that. To-do list, one of the, we need to update our, our work plan and the town planners' priorities. I'm going to suggest that we press ahead on the town center in particular and to the extent that we can get the committee meetings together, the master plan piece and see if those can be moved. I think almost everything else will move, you know, it's either, you know, Davidson Park is a, is a small committee piece and the Wright Lock Farm, as we're just tracking that moment, and, so I think we will continue to look at project updates on these, but I think we would like to move as quickly as possible. I think we talked about moving forward on the main street blocks. I think if we can, at the next meeting, I'd like to have the board review that scope of work and move forward on that.
That would be great.
And I think we would also, to the extent we can, I think it also, would also like to look at, or at least have a few people look at the work. John Clemson's been doing quite a bit of work putting together some general guidelines for new construction and guidelines of innovation. And he's borrowed from a lot of the work that's been developed in Boston and elsewhere, so it may be pretty good. And we want to take a look at that.
It's a good start.
And it would be very helpful in looking at the form-based codes and see if there's, you know, is there general material in there that we can extract and do useful work on there, so.
That'll be, that'll be great, because I think one of the great challenges we've been facing is trying to figure out, well, we know that there are certain things we want to preserve, but what's the what?
Yeah, and Betsy, what's on your calendar? You're going to take vacation for.
Good for you.
I have one more question before, what happened with the street tree bylaw? I still don't know.
Oh, there were, well, okay, I was away, but.
The short answer.
Short answer, short, short, short answer. There was one section that there, that several town meeting members had, had indicated some concern about. So we're going to regroup around that, bring it out to a broader group, you know, and just, because it is a bylaw, requires a two-thirds vote. And by the way, it's like apparently the first sort of general bylaw that's been changed in dog's years.
It's a general town bylaw as opposed to zoning, it doesn't require a two-thirds vote. Town bylaws are a simple majority.
As a simple majority, yes, you're correct.
Yeah, okay, so that's kind of.
We would like to have it as wide, as wide accepted as possible.
So I think what we're going to try to do is have a meeting in early, mid-January and then have a public meeting to discuss it.
Yeah, but the good news is that these people, people have their eyes open now, so that's good.
Okay, uh, okay, so Betsy, on your calendar, anything that's pressing, you need advice or priorities from us?
I think I'm good, except I, we have been approached by a developer, Ms., who has apparently the Calumet Building under agreement and wants to come in and discuss that project.
Which, which building is that, I'm sorry?
It's the.
Physicians Building.
Physicians Building, Fifteen Dix Street. And it's the development team, Mr. Manzo and Mr. Byrne.
So, so what's it zoned for right now?
It's now a residential zone.
It's owned residential?
Yeah.
However, it's zoned, as I recall, the answer is in the packet at hand here somewhere. It is zoned as a, I think it's one of the smaller, it's one of the RDB sixes zones perhaps.
That reminds me.
Very, we can.
A zoning map, like maybe over there or something.
We can, we can bring it up if needs be, but anyway.
I have two more items.
So that would be, so you'll be talking with them about potentially scheduling a, an initial discussion is what they're looking for.
Probably in one of the first meetings in January.
Okay.
Yeah, I have two loose ends. We have gotten an estimate from BU of about five thousand dollars, it may be a little less, to do the survey work. And the.
Proposal was to, was to ask the Alliance to provide some of all that.
Right, 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 so anyhow, it would either come from, we have ten thousand dollars in the Alliance fund for, for preservation. So I think it could come from that and then.
Reserve the balance, yeah, okay. Because I think we were talking about using the town's, the planning board's professional consulting funds to, to advance one of the main street.
Okay, okay.
All right, so do you need an authorization to, to get a formal bid from or issue a purchase order on it? Well, you, you're going to have a scope of work.
I need to talk with Ina about it, but I think if that's where you want to go with it, then that's.
Okay, can it wait until, do we need a formal authorization now? We, you know, I think you need a scope of work and a commitment from them on the price before we go ahead.
Right, right.
Okay, can we do that early in January then?
Their people are probably ready to go in January, so.
Do we want to authorize a not to exceed?
A not to exceed five thousand?
Sounds good, go for it.
Okay, so we've got a motion, I will spell out for, this is to authorize five thousand dollars.
No, that amount.
Not to exceed five thousand.
Five thousand dollars.
To.
For survey.
For survey work.
For survey work for the town center.
Okay, as we discussed, okay.
Second.
Second, further discussion?
Great.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with that work, both John Clemson and I said that we would read or proof or do whatever necessary to kind of move it along.
Great.
The other thing is developer Bob, Robert Murray, has expressed interest in conveying a property to the town for a first-time home buyer or rental property.
Property or a structure?
It's a, it's a property that includes a structure.
Oh, the property too?
It includes a three-bedroom house. And this is a building that is a very cute, single-family house. It's right beside Creative Corner on Sheridan Circle. And he originally acquired the property to, it has eleven thousand square feet and he originally acquired the property to do a duplex, a large duplex. And according to his agent, Phyllis Setzel, who was in here several weeks ago, he has decided that the building is too nice a building to tear down. So what he is proposing to do is to divide the lot and build a single family on, this lot is unique in that it goes all the way through to the other side of Sheridan Circle. So he's proposing to develop the other side and basically carve off this house and convey it to the housing partnership.
That's great.
However, the concern isn't that you've got eleven thousand square feet divided by two, you don't get sixty-five hundred, so.
Right, so there's a little bit of concern. I've asked Al to look at the zoning issue and how that would work. What's interesting is his maps of the property indicate that it's already two lots and that there might have been some kind of merger. But I've basically asked him for an opinion of what kind of zoning relief it needs.
Yeah, good.
It's a cute house though.
That's, that's.
Other issues, Mary?
I was just wondering, is the housing partnership board said anything about, has John been to see it?
We actually, well, actually Tuesday morning, a couple of us had a tour of the place. And there were two or three people from the housing partnership and me, just to kind of do a quick walkthrough. And it's kind of got a funky layout, but it's certainly doable. And they seemed interested. There were a couple of, of questions, but, you know, they're mulling it over. And it may need, it may need some de-lighting and a couple of other things, but.
Sure.
That's, actually there's replacement windows in there and pretty much two new, two, yeah, it is. But two new bathrooms, relatively new bathrooms and a relatively new kitchen.
Great, oh, good.
Excellent, good. Okay, I'm sorry, further questions, anything?
Never we meet again.
I noticed Hubert is doing something about medical marijuana treatment centers.
Yes, I saw that.
What is percolating in our town?
We've had a set of email chains, Joan Langsum and Donna Catalano have both dealt with this issue in other, in other, in their other lives. Donna is in the prosecutor's office and Joan in some of her legal work. And we've forwarded that to Tom Howley as the board chairman. And Betsy looked into it and I think there's, it turns out there's relatively few allowed in the state, so. And so the consensus was to keep looking at it. I don't have seen any, I don't, I don't think we're going to see any motion until after the first of the year, but I think we should trigger people's discussion at that point.
Just start thinking about it.
I attended the Board of Health meeting about two weeks ago, I guess. And I had done a memo for this board on the issue of medical marijuana and that the state health secretary is required by the law to have a plan for how this program is being implemented by April first. And there's fourteen counties, there's a desire for five dispensing facilities per county. And what's happening is a number of communities are basically saying, not in my backyard. So what happens in the situation where all the communities within a county decide they don't want this type of dispensary unit in their community? So the Board of Health is taking the stance that they would like to see what the state secretary does with this program. And then they will move forward on some form of action. So Jen Murphy and I are working pretty closely together to try to figure it out.
Joan raised the issue that the dispensary might be considered more like a drugstore than a, you know, for example, the adult entertainment overlay district uses their zone here, so. I think it, it sounded like there was some fairly complex. And if the state is going to develop some model guidelines, the thought was to take a look at what they're doing before we jump into it, yeah.
And there has also been discussion about, about oncology centers and they may be in a, in a prime location to be the dispensary unit, so.
Like six twenty Washington?
Potentially.
Okay, as we're beginning to drift, okay, other, other topics before we close this evening?
When are we meeting again, when do we?
Uh, well, we should pick a date.
I think January third was the last.
Well, I definitely won't be here, I thought there was some chance of the tenth, but instead, but I don't know.
I mean, we can switch to the, I can send out a new doodle survey that's, that goes for.
I responded and I told you I can't be here on the third.
Well, I, it's, it's an incomplete survey.
Right, right, so can we determine?
Well, let's post, why don't we post the third and the tenth and then we'll withdraw one when we decide if we can get a quorum on the tenth. And with, with the, probably it would be the tenth, yeah.
I mean, either one's, either one's fine.
Pencil it in then.
Yeah, let's, let's put down the tenth as the first priority and pencil in the third as a backup in case.
I definitely.
That's, we understand.
Presenting a paper.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so I, this will require us to adjourn before nine thirty, but if there's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
If you have a second, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Happy New Year.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Sean, thank you.